Share the word for us.
Join with me as we look to the Lord for His grace. As we enter into the second day of these special meetings. Loving Father, we pray that your blessing may rest upon the reading and meditation of your word. As we heard a few minutes ago, Lord, you have words of eternal life. To whom else can we go? And thank you also for reminding us that thy word endures forever. The eternal, unchanging word. Heaven and earth shall pass away, but your word will never pass away. Thy word forever is settled in heaven. To this eternal enduring word, to this life-giving word, we come once again this evening. Do minister to all of us. And draw us close to thee. We pray this with thanksgiving in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. John chapter seventeen is a very unique chapter in the sense that here in you find the longest recorded prayer of our Lord Jesus Christ. Quite often in the gospels, we read about the prayer life of Lord Jesus Christ. Much later in Hebrews chapter five and verse seven, the writer reminds us that Jesus, in the days of his flesh, he prayed with strong crying and tears. And was heard that he feared. So that's how the writer of the Hebrews sums up the prayer life of Lord Jesus Christ. When you come to the gospels, you find references to his prayer life. For example, in Matthew chapter fourteen, verse twenty-three, we read that when it was evening, he retired alone to a mountain to pray. And then in Luke's Gospel, chapter six and verse twelve, we read that he went into a mountain to pray and he prayed all night before God. Mass Gospel, chapter one, verse thirty-five, rising up early in the morning. He departed into a solitary place and there he prayed. And Luke's Gospel, chapter five, verse sixteen, he withdrew himself into the wilderness to pray. We have so many references to show us the extent of his prayer, the duration of his prayer. But what exactly is the content of his prayer? The diction of his prayer, we are not told. In this context, John chapter seventeen seems to lift the curtain. To make us hear what the Son of God was praying from earth to his father. Such protracted seasons that he spent in the presence of the Lord. All night, evenings, early in the mornings. Now that at least tells us that he enjoyed the presence of the Father and he spent quality time with the Father. And it's also true that he spent his time with the Lord, he was also seeking the guidance of the Father. Well, as a son, he had every prerogative to guide himself. He had the needed wisdom because he was a second person in the Trinity. But as man, he set aside the prerogatives of divinity. And he accepted the limitations of creaturehood or humanity. We could put it this way, in essence, he was God, but in behavior, he was man. That's how he was fully God and fully man. And by constantly depending upon the Father for every decision that he had to make. He shows us an example as to how a perfect human being has to behave. Yesterday, we saw how man chose self-government, rejecting God's government in his life. When he chose the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. He was trying to tell God that I can run my own life, I can be the master of my own life, I don't have made decisions, I don't need you. I need not depend upon you. And having chosen self-government, God, in his grace allowed man to do what he wanted. He would not interfere with his freedom of choice. So many centuries have passed, misery has increased, tragedies have increased. But God is forced to be a silent spectator because man chose self-government, rejecting divine government. You cannot blame God. The world that he created, he gave man the choice of divine government and self-government and man on our behalf. As the federal head of the whole humanity, he chose self-government. If there is one thing that ruins today, man today, it is the self-will of man. Placed in opposition to the will of God. Sin is basically doing my own thing. Without any regard to the word of God, without any regard to the will of God. All we like sheep have gone astray, everyone has turned to his own way, but the Lord hath laid on him the iniquity of us all. What is that one iniquity of which the whole world is guilty of? Everyone has turned to his own way, doing my own thing. Following the dictates of my own heart. Governed by self-will. Enthralling self in my heart and running my life myself. How beautifully the Lord illustrates the life of dependence. My meat is to do the will of him that sent me and to finish his work. I came down from heaven not to do my own will, but the will of him that sent me. I seek not my own will, but the will of the Father which sent me. He that sent me is with me. My Father hath not left me alone, because I always do those things that please him. I have received the commandment from the Father, what I should say, what I should speak. Can you picture in these words, in these statements, which I quoted from John's Gospel? The after dependence Jesus had upon the Father. In essence, he was God, but in behavior, he was man. So he waited upon the Lord for guidance and said, the third thing that we can think of as to why he spent such protracted times in prayer is that he might pray for his children to intercede for them. Now, in this context, we come to John seventeen, but before we come to John seventeen, we need to start from John thirteen. Because in John thirteen, he was gathering his twelve apostles. And that was a private meeting. And something very sad happened in chapter thirteen, that Satan enters into Judas' carryet. And though he partakes of the fellowship mean, and though Jesus made an extra effort to show his love for the man who is going to betray him. And eventually Judas chooses to walk out of the group, which you read in verse thirty. So all that happens from John thirteen thirty, John fourteen, John fifteen, John sixteen, John seventeen, it's all for the eleven. It's not for the general multitude. Just for eleven people, he gives them solid teachings on so many important subjects. He talks about the Holy Spirit at length. He speaks about his own departure from the world. He speaks to them about the sufferings to come. He speaks to them about the world and the rejection of the world. He spoke about heaven, he spoke about the second coming. So many precious things, doctrines, we find in chapters fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. So we need to bear in mind as we enter into John seventeen, after having given them teachings, he is now praying for them. He is now praying for those specific eleven. That small remnant who chose to be with him when multitudes left. John six sixty-eight, we heard brother read, to whom shall we go? You have the words of eternal life. But if you see a little before that, you understand that many of the disciples left because they said, it's a hard saying, who can hear it, John six sixty. And from that time, many of his disciples went back and walked no more with it. A big multitude withdrew themselves from the Lord. And here is a small remnant who stuck to him. So much so, in Luke's Gospel chapter, ready to, the Lord says, ye are they who stood with me in my temptations, verse twenty-eight. And I appoint to you a kingdom from my Father. So this prayer is directed for the remnant. And in this case, only eleven. But then, as you read through the prayer of John seventeen, you also understand the Lord is not only praying for those eleven, but he was also praying for those who are going to believe the word even through those eleven, and which includes you and me. Because from the apostolic times, the Lord raises a train of missionaries down through the centuries. Churches form. Evangelism takes place. So many are brought into the sound of the gospel. And today, we have the privilege to say that we are children of God, born again by the Spirit of God, adopted into God's family. And we have come into the remnant. We have come into that little flock. So this prayer is not only relevant to those eleven, it's also relevant to you and me. Because the Lord prophetically prayed for those who are going to believe through their word. So we need to carefully pay attention to this prayer. Because in chapter seventeen, verse nine, he says, I pray not for the word. I pray for those whom you have given me. It's not for the word that he is praying. So if we're children of God, this prayer has so much relevance to us. Now, what did he pray for? You notice he prayed for at least five important things. And that's a good model for us when we come to pray for one another. The first thing that he prayed for is for their protection and keeping in an evil world. You find that in verses eleven, twelve and fifteen. And then you also find the Lord praying for their sanctification. God wanted them to be holy in a defined world. And then the Lord prayed in verse twenty-six, that the love of God may be in them. And that would motivate their ministry and their service, that you find in verse twenty-six. Then he also prayed for their glorification, in spite of all the sufferings they have. In spite of all the rejection they are going to encounter. He also foresaw the day of glorification. There's a Good Friday in our lives, but thank God, there is an Easter and there is an Ascension. And there is an enthronement. Good Friday is not all. In the path of the cross, yes, I have to cross Good Friday. But there is an Easter and there is an Ascension and there is an enthronement. We take the path of the Master and we follow him. We take the cross to follow him. We come unto the yoke to follow him. So he prayed for their glorification, verses twenty-two and twenty-four. Lord wanted to share his glory with his disciples. And which means he wants to share that glory with you and with me. God of all grace, who called us to eternal glory, first Peter, chapter five and verse ten. Redemption calling also includes glorification calling. We are called to suffer, we are called to be separated, we are called to serve, we are also called to glory. And then more than all this, he prayed for the unity because at least five times in this prayer, verses eleven, twice in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Five times, he repeatedly keep praying for their unity or their oneness. That makes us ask the question, did the Lord foresee that the church, the visible church is going to be divided? After the first church comes into existence at Jerusalem? Very much yes. Even before the church came into existence, the Lord prophesied in Matthew seven, there is going to be corruption in the pulpit. Many will say to me, Lord, have you not prophesied in thy name? Have you not driven out demons, done many wonderful works? Then will I tell them, depart from me, ye that work iniquity. I do not know you. There's going to be corruption in the pulpit. And then when you come to Matthew thirteen, he speaks about the parable of the wheat and tares when there will be tares growing together with the wheat. It's going to be a corrupt church. It's not going to be a pure church. And then servants come back to the master and tell him, master, would you that be go back to pluck out all the tares? He says, don't do it. Let them grow, both grow together till the day of harvest. And then I will do the work of separating them. That gives us a clue as to how we need to handle when there is mixture in the church. There will be mixture in the church, but one of the ways to handle it is not to plug them out, because we do not know for sure who the tares are and who the wheat is. The day is reserved where the Lord is going to do the work of separation. He that is filthy, let him be filthy still. He that is holy, let him be holy still. He that is righteous, let him be righteous still. He that is unrighteous, let him be unrighteous still. Behold, I come quickly. And my reward is with me to give to everyone as his work shall be. Revelation twenty-two, eleven and twelve. We need a lot of patience. So many things that are happening in the church that we are not happy about. But we need to understand when God is working, the enemy is also working. The very fact the enemy is so active, not so much when you make a comparison with the secretaries and parliaments of the world, there's more politics in the church than elsewhere. Have you ever wondered why? Because the enemy knows all the present governments will vanish. The church is going to take up the governments in days to come. The Bible tells us that Jesus is going to come, he's going to rule over the earth, and the saints are going to be the co-rulers. The church is destined for the throne. As individuals, we are destined for the throne. That's the reason Peter calls us royal priests. We are today priests, but we are also royal priests. In the Old Testament, these two things never came together. Saul was a king, but Samuel was a prophet. And a priest. When he tried to enter into the others' ministry, that became his undoing. So it was all mixed there, but now, as believers, we have that dual calling, to be priests unto the Lord, to be kings unto the Lord. Having washed us in his own blood, he made us kings and priests. Revelation one six. He made us. What an exalted calling you and I have with the Lord Jesus Christ. So the Lord was praying for these eleven and for those who are going to believe their word. And so this is attacked from all angles. There's going to be corruption, there's going to be mixture. In the midst of it, the Lord was praying for their protection, for their sanctification. That they may be filled with love in spite of all the adverse things they are going to face. For their glorification and for their unification. Now the question comes. If the Lord has really prayed for unity, why is there so much divisions? Ever since the church came into existence, in Acts chapter two, you find so many problems creeping into the church. Today, the visible church is a divided church. Several years ago, maybe thirty, forty years ago, I read that there were twenty-five thousand denominations. I'm sure now it should be more than forty or fifty thousand denominations. We have just eleven eighty-nine chapters in the whole Bible. And even if you take verses, it's thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand odd verses, but denominations exceed far more. For the old looker, for the outsider, it's a big question, why are you Christians so divided? Now, I'm not going to get into that topic, because there could be several justifiable reasons and also wrong reasons as to why we are divided. But here in this chapter, the Lord is specifically praying for the unity of the church. Now, what is he exactly praying? For whom is he praying? He's not praying for the word, he's praying for the remnant. And who is this remnant? My burden and prayer, as you go through this chapter, as you meditate along with me this chapter, the Lord may plant in you and me the deep desire that we may belong to this remnant. We may share the characteristics of this remnant. Because in the course of the prayer, the Lord not only prayed for them, but drops clues or hints as to who these are. He describes their characteristics, and I'm going to share some of them with you. And we are going to take self-inventory, examining our own hearts in the light of God's word, whether these specifications fit our Christian life today. God is not going to judge me on the basis of my denomination. He's not going to judge me on the basis of the preacher who taught me the word, the congregation I attended. He's going to judge me purely on one basis, the word that I have spoken to you, the same shall judge you on the last day. John's Gospel, chapter twelve, and verse forty-eight. It's going to be the eternal enduring word that's going to be the judging word. The life-giving word is going to be my judging word. If there is one thing that we need to learn to tremble at, it is the word of God. It is the word of God, not before man, not before any denomination, it to the word of God. To him will I look, who is of a humble and a contrite heart, who trembled at my word. God is very choosy about those whom he is going to favorably look upon. He's going to favorably look upon those who tremble at his word. My prayer is that we may belong to that remnant. That remnant which trembles at God's word, that remnant who honors God's word, because God himself has honored his word. Now quickly, let me share some of the characteristics of these remnant. One very strange, striking expression that you find as you read through John seventeen is the phrase that Lord uses to refer to his followers. Though earlier in chapter thirteen to fifteen, he refers to them as disciples, servants, chosen people, friends, his own. When it comes to chapter seventeen, he uses none of these words. He uses a very special expression. Father, those who you have given me. Father, those who you have given me. You know, it comes eight times. Eight times. Look at the frequency and the emphasis. Now, what does it mean? If somebody has to give something to me, that something has to be owned by that somebody. If I have to give even a fountain pen to you, first of all, I need to be the owner of it. I cannot give away something which does not belong to me. If the Father has given a certain group of people into the hands of the Son, that means that group of people first and foremost belong to the Father. Now, here is the first characteristic of these people for whom the Lord prayed for unity. They have the blood of redemption upon them. They are born again, they are saved, they have the blood of reconciliation, and also they have the spirit of adoption. Now they belong to the family of God. And because they belong to the family of God, the Spirit of God has come into them, they have accepted Christ as their Lord, and they have yielded themselves, committed themselves to the lordship of Christ. So we can call them as given ones. Who are the given ones? The given ones are those who are surrendered. There needs to be a twofold act in the way of surrender. On the one hand, there is the Son who surrendered his life for the sake of all of us. And based on his death, the Lord is inviting the world to come to him. That's a gospel we preach. Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laid, and I'll give you rest. But there needs to be a response to that invitation. Everybody does not become his own. Only those who commit themselves, yield themselves to the lordship of Christ, become his own. So the given ones are the surrendered ones. In other words, let me put it this way. The first issue that has to be settled in a believer's life, if he claims to be in the remnant, is the ownership issue. Who owes you? Who is your master? Who is your law? Whose will is being done in your life? That's the first issue that we need to settle. And only then my services are accepted before the Lord. Acts twenty-seven, twenty-three, Paul talking to those fellow travelers in the ship who went through a big storm. He says, whose I am, talking about his God, he says, whose I am and whom I serve. If I do not belong to him, then I am not qualified to serve him. If he is not my Lord, then I cannot expect him to provide for my every need. The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. I shall not want is a sequel to the lordship. His lordship comes first and his saviorhood comes next. Ephesians five twenty-three, he is the head of the church and he is the savior of the body. Headship comes first, saviorhood comes next. Many of us want to learn the things of God, but do you know the secret? Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laid, and I'll give you rest. Then what? Take my yoke upon you and learn. There is the yoke first and then the learning comes next. So John thirteen one, the Lord refers to these people as his own. Having loved his own, he loved them till the end. My dear brother and sister, whoever you are, it's a question that I pose to my own heart, a question that I pose to you. Can you say, in the light of God's word, that you are yielded to God? That Christ is the Lord of your life, that the will of God is being done in your life? At least there is a desire, a sincere seeking to discover and to do God's will. The price has been paid, you are born with a price. But have you accepted the price and yielded yourself? Because he purchased us, we don't belong to ourselves. Therefore glorify God in your body. Therefore be not ye servants of men, first Corinthians six nineteen and seven twenty-three. This speaks of the Lord purchasing us from himself, he purchased us with a precious blood, first Peter one, nineteen. The blood of the lamb without blemish, without spore. Now let's go on to the second characteristic of these given ones or disciples or the remnant. In verses two and three, you read about eternal life. They have received eternal life. When the father gave them to the son, the son, he gave them eternal life. John's Gospel, chapter seventeen, and verses two and three. As thou hast given him power over all flesh, that he should give eternal life to as many as thou hast given him. And this is life eternal, that they might know thee, the only true God, and Jesus Christ whom thou hast sent. Now what's eternal life? Eternal life is knowing God. Now the word knowing could be a very confusing word because it could be theoretical knowing, it could be head knowledge. As the scribes did, they knew the scripture so well, they could guide the wise men to go to Bethlehem, they could poke meek out five too so quickly. Yet they did not know the Lord personally, they had no desire for the living word, they were interested in the written word. And that's the danger that prisoned them is in today. Going to church, reading the Bible, maintaining family prayers, baptize, prisoned with a Christian name, all wonderful things. But do I have a personal experiential knowledge of who God is? Has there been a personal encounter with Jesus Christ? Has there been a day when I've truly repented of my sin? Has there been a day when the life of God, the very divine life, coming into me? Now this is something which is inward, it's not external. And in John's Gospel especially, in twenty-one chapters, more than forty times you come across the word life, abundant life, everlasting life, overwhelming life. Now what's the kind of life that Jesus is talking about? Suddenly, he's not talking about physical life because he's talking to people who are physically alive. We need to understand that human personality has three dimensions, they have a spirit, they have a soul, they have a body, first Thessalonians five, twenty-three. You have all these three parts, and you need to have life in all these three realms if you can call yourself as a wholesome, healthy, harmonious, complete human being. Unfortunately, every child born in this world is born physically alive, psilocylean alive, but spiritually dead. Till the day that the life of God enters into a person. He's in a dead condition. The Bible does not say the wages of sin will be death, it says the wages of sin is death, that's a present condition. Everyone outside Christ, everyone outside the life of God is in death. And death in the Bible does not mean going out of existence. It means eternal separation. When some loved one dies in our family, we either bury or cremate or do something, and then there is an eternal separation, no more communication, no more friendship or companionship with that person. So death in the Bible means eternal separation. Sin has brought eternal separation between God and man, that's the reason why God had to drive out the man, Genesis three, twenty-four. And in order to get back the man, he needs to put life back into his spirit. It's not the religion that's going to do the job. Religion can teach me good things, the Bible can teach me good things, but there needs to be a personal encounter with Jesus Christ. The written word is given to me that it may lead me to the living word. Otherwise, it remains a bookish knowledge, and knowledge offered up. As we read in first Corinthians, say, it gives me only knowledge and pride. Now what is this eternal life? At least four things we can say in the light of God's word. Number one, it's a gift from God. We don't earn it, we don't achieve it, we don't work for it. God is giving it as a gift. The gift of God is eternal life through Jesus Christ our Lord, Romans, chapter six, verse twenty-three. And secondly, this life is in his son, it's a package deal. First John, chapter five, verses eleven and twelve. This is a record that God has given us of his son. Eternal life is in the son, he who has the son has life, and he who does not have the son does not have life. There, the whole thing is settled. It's bundled up with Jesus Christ. By accepting the person of Christ, I receive eternal life. And thirdly, the offered life must be appropriated life. God offers it to all. Come, take the water of life freely, if any man thirsts, let him come unto me. Him that cometh unto me, I will in no voice cast out. But an individual needs to respond. Needs to respond in repentance. Lord, I have sinned, forgive me. Lord, I believe in the appalling sacrifice that you have made on my behalf. I believe that you died as my substitute. There needs to be faith and repentance. And fourthly, it's a present reality, not a future possibility. The gift of God is eternal life. Today, right now, even as you're hearing this message, as you repent and say, Lord, I have failed. I have been taking covering under the religion, my self-righteousness, forgive me. I come to Christ now as my life giver, forgive me, put this life in me. Now before we leave this second characteristic, let me raise another question, how do I know that I have this eternal life or not? Because it's a very crucial question. I'm going to give you a few indications from the scripture as to what the eternal life, divine life, does in a person. If these things have happened in your life and mine, then we can assert it, that we have the eternal life. The first thing is deliverance. We are liberated and delivered from that power of sin when this eternal life comes into us. Romans, chapter eight and verse two, we read, for the law of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus has made me free from the law of sin and death. There are two laws operating in the universe, the first one is the law of sin and death, which draws all people like the law of gravity to sin and destruction. But there is another elevating law defeating the law of sin and death, it is the law of the spirit of life. This life offered to me through the spirit, this life offered to me through Jesus Christ, this life offered to me through the word of God. Second one is when this life comes into me, I am immediately drawn into a personal intimate, ongoing, progressive relationship with God. Nobody need to tell me, read your Bible, nobody need to tell me, go and pray. When Saul of Tarsus was converted on the road to Damascus, one of the many signs that God gave to Ananias to discover who he is, he said, you go, you find one man praying, and that is all. What made him to pray for three days? There's a hunger to commune with God. Psalm one hundred and fifteen, verse seventeen, the dead praise not the Lord, nor any that go down into silence. They cannot truly, in the spiritual sense, praise the Lord, commune with God. The living, the living shall praise thee as I do this day, Isaiah thirty-eight, verse nineteen. It's the life in me that links me to God. He is a spirit, my spirit is made alive, and there is a communication. And the third thing is the enlightenment. Suddenly, the Bible becomes a new book to you. Suddenly, you are able to discern the things of God. Till then, it was a closed book, it's a sealed book, but now it becomes an open book. In him is life, and the life is the light of men, John one, four. For those who have come to know the Lord, you try to look back upon those days when you newly came to know the Lord, there's a hunger for God's word, and when you read God's word, you hear the voice of God. You hear God speaking to you. So there is enlightenment. And fourthly, there's a hunger for fellowship with saints. You begin to search and seek for believers who have similar life in them. We know that we are passed from death into life because we love the brother. One, John, chapter three, verse fourteen. The sheer sign is that I have a hunger for fellowship. I cannot justify those who say they are born again, they said, I don't need any church, I don't need any fellowship, I can stay all by myself, with my family at home, read the Bible, pray, I know, I commune with God. Then we are contradicting, one, John, three, fourteen. We are also contradicting Acts two, forty-seven, and the Lord added to the church such as should be saved, Acts two, forty-seven. He does the saving, he does the adding. Now though you are all far away, placed in so many places, why do you get connected to a meeting like this? Because there's a hunger for God's word, hunger for fellowship. Maybe when it's a normal time, you travel many miles to come to your place of worship. Once I heard of a man who had walked through the forest, six hours every Sunday, to come to the nearest assembly. He said they'll cook their food, pack them up, carry their children on their shoulders, walk six hours to attend a two to three hour service, and then walk back all the six hours because there are no roads, no buses, no transport. What makes them to come like that? It's fellowship, desire for fellowship. And then fifthly, it is the reigning word, reign in life, Romans five, seventeen, when there is life, there is victory, there is overcoming power. God has called us to be overcomers, five, seventeen. And then there is affinity for God's word. What do you think? Peter asked that question, to whom shall we go? You have the words of eternal life because there was that life in him. Because in the following chapter, in chapter six, verse sixty-three, Lord Jesus was saying, it is the spirit that quickens or revives. The word that I speak unto you, they are spirit and they are life. It is a life impregnated word. It's not normal words. It's not like reading any other book in the world, even books of written by saints. This is a unique book which feeds me with the life of God. Every word pulsates with divine life. If I'm going to be an honest reader, humbling myself, trembling at his word, seeking with all my heart, the word is going to minister to me day after day. There is affinity for the word. And this life is a glorifying life. When Christ, who is our life, shall appear, then shall he also appear with him in glory, Colossians, chapter three, verse four. Look at all these wonderful characteristics that describe the person who has eternal life. Can I say that this is true of me in my life? I leave that question to your own heart. Don't ever take shelter in a good church that I are attending. Oh, I belong to this church, my parents belong to this church, this is the best church that we have found, it's a Bible-based church, thank God, God helped us to find one. But that's not going to be our shelter, that's not going to be our security. The Lord is going to personally examine us. Do you have this life in you? Have you settled the ownership question? Are you the given one? Given by the father to the son? And do you have eternal life? That this leads us to the third characteristic that you find in verse six, John's Gospel, chapter seventeen and verse six. I have manifested thy name unto the men which thou gavest me out of the world, like they were, and thou gavest them me. And notice that last expression, they have kept thy word. How confidently the Lord could say of the eleven, they have kept the word. One could not keep the word, so he walked out of the company, Judas. Many were not willing to receive his word, they said, it's a hard saying, the multitude left, John six, sixty-six. Here are the eleven, the remnants sticking to the master, saying, Lord, we want you, we want your word. There are four things that you can do with the word. It all begins by loving the word, then learning the word, then living the word, then living the word. If I don't really love the Lord, love the word, I cannot learn the word, I won't invest time in learning the word. And God has magnified his word. To what extent? Psalm one hundred and thirty-eight, verse two says, you have magnified your word above all your name. Can you imagine if there is anything higher, greater, more exalted than the name of Lord Jesus Christ, name of God? But God says, I have magnified my word, that's a kind of honor that God has given to his own word. That's the reason many people prefer to read Bible on their knees, I'm not advocating a special posture for you, but suddenly I would advocate a right-heart attitude. With a humble, contrite, trembling heart. When we go to the word, it's more than searching the word, it's allowing the word to search us. You understand, it's God who is ministering to you, God who is speaking to you. That's why I get very sad and offended when people get up and walk out when the ministry of the word is going on. When you come late to the ministry of God's word, when you get up and walk out, when you divert your attention, when the word of God is being preached, either playing with your mobile or sending messages, talking to people when the word of God is being preached, it's an insult not to the preacher, not to the congregation, but the Lord who gave the word. When you deal with the word, you are dealing with the Lord himself. And when we say the word of God, the Bible gives us three connotations of three meanings to it. The first connotation, when you say it is the word of God, it means the total teaching or the body of teaching from Genesis to Revelation. In this sense, is the word used to logos. Logos refers to all the words of God, all the inspired words of God. Sometimes he tells us what Satan said, that doesn't mean God inspired those words, but he's factually recording what Satan has said, what sinners have said, what mockers have said, what saints have said. There's a factual, accurate recording of God's word. So that is the important thing that we need to understand. So that is the important thing that we need to understand. And then you also see that this logos, Hebrews chapter four and verse twelve, we read like this, Hebrews chapter four, verse twelve. There the logos is given to us. And then the second meaning that you come for the word of God is rema. The word rema is the present word that God is giving you when you seek him on a daily basis, man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word that comes out of the mouth of God, that proceeds. Not proceeded, though he was referring to the Old Testament scriptures at that point of time in Matthew four four, and the Lord said, that which proceeds out of the mouth of God. The word that comes out, that is the present speaking. In this context, Ephesians six seventeen speaks to us about the sword of the spirit. I need to learn how to use the sword at the enemy at the appropriate angle at the appropriate time. Rema word, God giving us the word according to my need today. A word in season. Proverbs fifteen twenty-three, a word in season, as we wait upon the Lord, God gives us the word in season. They call it present speaking or living speaking. This is the fresh manna that I get on a daily basis. I need to know the logos, I need to know the rema. And I also need to know the third meaning of who Christ is. And that is Lord Jesus Christ himself, because he is called the word of God, Revelation chapter nineteen and verse thirty. He is called the word of God. Having seen what the word of God is, quickly we will see how a believer is led to keep the word. In our unregenerate state, pre-conversion days, before our salvation, we neither had the desire, willingness, nor the ability to keep the word of God. That was our lost condition, but after we have come into the grace of the new covenant. Every time we come around the Lord's table, we say, this is the blood of the new covenant. Now what does it mean to come under the new covenant? We come under the new covenant relationship, new covenant commitment and also new covenant blessings, and I'm going to quickly share with you five of them. Every child of God who has come under the new covenant of grace and blessing enjoys these five wonderful divine blessings. And the Old Testament prophesied, Ezekiel chapter thirty-six, verse twenty-six, the Lord said, I'll take away the sorry heart, I'll give you a new heart and I'll put new spirit within you. No, that's one of the transactions that take place at the foot of the cross. And then in Jeremiah thirty-one thirty-three, which is repeated in Hebrews eight ten, it says, I'll write my law on your heart, I'll put my law on your mind, in your heart. Imagine God doing that, the Old Testament under the old covenant, he wrote it on tables of stone. But today God says, I'm going to write it on your heart if you allow me. I'm going to give you a new heart, a new slate, and I'm going to write my law myself. And then Jeremiah thirty-one thirty-four, repeated in Hebrews eight eleven, we read, from the least to the greatest, they are going to know me. It's not outside knowing, that is intuition, it is inside knowing, that is intuition. Somebody is speaking from within you, teaching you, from the least to the greatest. Even if you are born again today, God begins to speak. The moment we are born again, we are brought into the school of Christ and the teaching begins. If you are willing to give time, if you are available, the master is always available to teach us. Holy Spirit who penned these words, staying twenty-four by seven in my heart, is willing to teach me. Explain to me why he wrote what he wrote. And then Jeremiah thirty-two forty, it says, I will put my fear in your heart, oh, what a wonderful thing. Old Testament is lights, lack this fear and then they rebel against God and draw on all those terrible curses and condemnation. And here is this punching verse, Ezekiel thirty-six, verse twenty-seven, I will cause you to walk in my ways, he shall keep my statutes, he shall do them. There's a world of difference between saying you do this, you obey this, you keep this, that's one way of saying it. The other way of saying is, I will cause you to walk in my way, I will cause you to keep God's word. Thirty-six, twenty-seven. Ezekiel thirty-six, twenty-seven tells us that he causes us to walk in his ways. He plants in me the desire to obey and he gives me the grace to obey. That's why he could say, in spite of all the failings the disciples had. If only they could totally be dependent on the Lord, dependent on the power of the spirit, dependent on the life within them, instead of relying upon their self-life. They could keep the word. Who are those who belong to him, the given ones? Those who have the eternal life and those who keep the word? Are these three specifications true in your life and mind? If it's not, it's time to turn to the Lord and say, Lord, I repent. You lay down your life on the cross of Calvary that you may own me. Having owned me, you want to impart that divine life. And imparting the divine life, you want me to have that power to obey your word. Join me as I pray, loving Father, we thank you for the wonderful prayer that you made on our behalf several centuries ago, not only you prayed for those eleven, you prayed for those who believe through their word. May these characteristics be a reality, be factual in our life, for this we ask in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.